I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Village Board of October 7th. Roll call, please.
Trustee Markwart?
Here.
Trustee Shink?
Here.
Trustee Takoka?
Here.
Trustee Forster?
Here.
Trustee Lundine?
Here.
President Cook?
Here.
And Trustee Oppenheim gave prior notice that he would not be in attendance.
Okay, we have a quorum, so would everyone please stand for the pledge if you are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we had no one sign up to wish to address the board, correct? Everybody is here for something that we're doing later? Okay. Nobody has a speaking part tonight?
Correct.
All right, so the first item then is omnibus vote agenda. Items under the omnibus vote agenda are considered routine and/or non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. If any one board member, staff, or citizen wishes to have a separate vote on any item, it will be pooled. It would be polled. So if nobody has anything to poll, is there a motion to approve items A through I?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion is second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Takoka?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Shink?
Aye.
Trustee Lundine?
Aye.
President Cook?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have no unfinished business, correct?
Correct.
Then we move on to new business. First item under new business is approval and passage of Resolution 2025-056, a resolution approving and authorizing the village president to execute the Cuneo property transfer agreement with Loyola University of Chicago. Manager Timoney.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Well, as everyone knows, it was announced several weeks ago that the Village of Vernon Hills is in the process of acquiring the Cuneo Mansion and Gardens from Loyola University of Chicago. Tonight is the first step in that process to formalize this arrangement with the approval of the Cuneo Property Transfer Agreement. I'm going to review the property transfer agreement in more detail in a few minutes, but first I wanted to take some time just to provide a quick overview of the property and how we arrived here this evening. So this is an aerial view of the site that's in question. In total, it's approximately 44 acres. The original site prior to the sale to Pulte subdivision was approximately 97 acres. I wanted to note that the site also includes frontage on Milwaukee Avenue extending from the ingress to the site on Milwaukee all the way up to the entrance of the residences at Cuneo. The egress to the site is to the west on Museum Boulevard, which includes a parking lot of about 75 parking spaces. And the zoning for the property is PIB, known as Public Institutional Building. So obviously, the property's been in the village for quite some time. I'm not going to go back more than 100 years to review, but I think it's relevant to start in 2009, when the property was transferred to Loyola University. So in 2009, the property was transferred to Loyola from the Cuneo Foundation. With this transfer, Loyola had intentions to turn the Cuneo Mansion and Gardens into a north campus for their university system. In 2011, they began operation of that campus and constructed a pavilion in place of the temporary tent on the site. The pavilion was used for weddings and events and ultimately to help sustain some of their educational programming. In 2015, Loyola worked with the village on selling off approximately 53 of the 97 acres to Pulte Homes to build a 128 single-family home subdivision. And what's important is, as part of this process, the village, Loyola, and Lake County entered into a preservation agreement. And it's actually this preservation agreement that is acting as the vehicle for the village to pursue the acquisition of this property. I'll go into some of the details of that preservation agreement in just a moment. In 2023, Loyola began a decision to try and move away from the property. They approached the village about exercising a right in that preservation agreement to acquire the property. And then in 2025, earlier this year, the Cuneo Foundation dissolved. And with that dissolution, that opened up Loyola to then begin the formal transfer of the property. So there are a couple of notes in the preservation agreement that I want to highlight. Again, Loyola did have an operating obligation in that preservation agreement. They were required to operate the property through the year 2030 unless they were released from that obligation by the Cuneo Foundation, which again happened earlier this year in 2025. With the preservation agreement, an escrow was established in the amount of $3 million. That escrow was to be used to draw down on making improvements and upgrades to the campus. Loyola spent a little over $1 million of that money to make upgrades to the roof system, the skylight system in the main atrium, as well as some enhancements to the gardens and grounds at the campus. There's currently approximately $1.8 million remaining of that escrow. And with the preservation agreement, if Loyola got to a point where they were no longer interested in operating the campus, the Village of Vernon Hills had the first right of refusal on the property or not-for-profit of our designation. So that's essentially what leads us to today. And so to facilitate this transition of the property, we're going to be entering into a property transfer agreement with Loyola. I want to thank Village Attorney Ferolo for working on this agreement. He and the attorney from Loyola have been working over the past several months on putting this together. It is quite extensive and incorporates a lot of the terms that we've discussed here as a board over the last year. I do want to highlight a couple of those points. First and foremost, this agreement, again, is the first step in that approval process to transfer this property. It not only includes the land, the structures, but also the improvements that Loyola's made to the property, as well as some of the personal property within the mansion. There is a due diligence period as part of this agreement that's going to take place over the next 60 days, where we'll have the opportunity to outline what property remains with the village and what property falls with Loyola. There are also some items in the mansion currently that are considered Cuneo family artifacts, which will go back to the family. I mentioned earlier, there is about $1.8 million remaining in the original escrow. That money, as part of this agreement, will come with the property to the Village of Vernon Hills. We are currently scheduled right now to close on the property in January of 2026. And then there's two other steps that are important to note. We will need a sign-off by Lake County on this transaction. Again, they were a party to the 2015 preservation agreement, so that agreement will need to be either amended or terminated, depending on the path that the county decides to take. And one item that was restructured as part of that agreement and is outlined in the transfer agreement is a recapture provision. So in the original preservation agreement, there was a profit sharing essentially on, if the village were to take over the property and sell the property, how the proceeds from that sale would be shared. Those were since renegotiated down to the terms that are outlined on your screen here. So in essence, in years zero through five, if the village were to sell the property, any proceeds from that sale would be shared 50/50 with Loyola. Between years six and 10, the proceeds would be 25% to Loyola, 75% to the village. And then after year 10, the full proceeds from any sale would remain with the village. And so essentially, this transfer agreement will make the village have full use and discretion of the property going forward. I'll pause there for a moment. If there's any questions that we can answer for the board on the transfer agreement, again, Village Attorney Ferolo put a lot of effort into this and can answer any clarifying questions if need be.
I have a question. The due diligence period, environmental?
Right.
Is that, I saw they're providing something from like, I can't, I forgot the year here. Some environmental study, probably when they purchased it. Was it 2014 or something? What are we doing about that? What do we?
We reviewed everything that's been provided. We haven't waited until today to start that. We're well underway. We actually have also engaged the environmental company that did their underlying studies to do a renewed Phase One, just to make sure that nothing has changed from the time the original Phase One was done back in, it was 102013, another one in 2019. So we're actually having a Phase One conducted right now.
Okay. And then the, is there any, I see like there's a, the three options that, for Lake County to sign off, there's no, there's no concern there, they're gonna?
No, I've had informal conversations with the Lake County Administration, and they're fully supportive of signing off.
And then we have, what is it, five? Can you go through the schedule again? Five years, it's 50%, 25%, and then 10 years is?
Yeah, it's our second bullet point on the right. So within the first five years, if there's a sale, net proceeds 50/50. Year six through 10, Loyola would get 25% of that. And then after year 10, the full dollars are to the village.
And then my last question is, so when you're talking about the contents, A, are they itemized currently? And then B, how do we determine if those itemized?
Right.
Is there anything in addition to those itemized that were taken or ownership on those?
Thank you. That's a great question. So in the original preservation agreement, it did outline certain Loyola artifacts. So when Loyola was granted the property in 2009, it not only included the mansion and the grounds, but also various artwork and artifacts within the mansion. Those remain and remain Loyola's property. So they'll ultimately go with Loyola. Now, they have made it clear that if the village decides to ultimately pursue keeping the mansion as a museum, there could be an agreement where they agree to house some of those artifacts and items in the mansion for display. I did mention there are other items that prior to this process, members of the Cuneo family had an opportunity to claim as part of their, you know, in essence, their inheritance or Cuneo family heirlooms. So many of those items have already been removed from the property. And then the remaining items are some just what we call personal property. So for example, in the main banquet room, there's a bunch of tables and chairs that they've used to facilitate their weddings and so on. It's unclear if that's going to stay with the property or if Loyola's going to be repurposing that type of thing to another part of their university system. So and our due diligence period over the next 60 days is when we're going to kind of iron out a lot of those ins and outs.
Trustee Lundine?
The staff that they currently have, are they keeping the staff that they currently have?
My understanding is they're trying to relocate them to another part of the university.
Thank you.
What's our, to secure the site for the time being, what does that look like right now? I mean, I know there's the fencing and patrols.
Yeah, that's a great question and one of many that we're going to have going forward. Our staff has had onsite meetings with Loyola over the past few months to talk about some of those shorter-term questions, I would say. There's certainly considerations of security, and then there's considerations of simply just how do we have a minimum level of maintenance over the next year as we go through our planning process. Currently, as it sits right now, there's typically staff onsite from Loyola's part, usually six of the seven days a week. There currently is not any type of 24/7 security. So I know our police department is kind of looking into, you know, options we might have to just make sure that there's an extra set of eyes on the campus, you know, once we take ownership. But certainly a great question and something that needs to be thought about with, you know, among the many other things with taking this property on. I will mention also, at our upcoming board meeting, we're going to be having our normal annual insurance renewal for our property and liability. Since we won't be taking possession of this property until January, we have a little bit extra time to add this to our list of properties. But one discussion we will probably need to have as a board is to what level we insure the property. Currently, right now, all of our facilities are replacement cost coverage, so meaning if we have a complete loss, our policy kicks in and we have the full cost to rebuild as is. Obviously, 115-year-old home is a different story and probably a little harder to achieve. So nothing we need to finalize tonight, but probably the next month or two is one of the questions that we'll at least have before the board in a short-term planning capacity.
Anybody else with anything before we move on on this?
Okay. So what we'll be looking for this evening is a motion to approve Resolution 2025-056. That would authorize the village president to sign the transfer agreement. And again, we have our closing scheduled for January 9th of 2026. And then just really the message to the community at that point is we'll be taking over the property, and there's going to be quite an extensive amount of planning and due diligence that needs to happen from there. Obviously, this is a large undertaking, just in terms of its size, but let alone the financial liability really that comes with this as far as just general maintenance and making sure that we're being good stewards to the property and to the taxpayers. So our intent is, in the upcoming fiscal year 2027 budget, to include funding, to likely hire some sort of consultant to help the village engage in long-term planning and community engagement to find out what we want to do for the long term.
And it looks like the agreement itself has a number of subject twos. I mean, there are still questions to be answered even though, and that's part of the process going forward, correct?
Correct.
Right. If something in due diligence is not to our satisfaction, we could decide not to go forward.
Can you repeat that?
I said if something we find in due diligence is not to our satisfaction, environmental, for example, although I don't expect we'll find anything there, we can decide to not go forward. I mean, that's a possibility.
Any other questions from the board? Anything else on this, manager?
No. That was it.
In that case, is there a motion to approve passage of Resolution 2025-056?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion is second. If there are no other questions, roll call, please.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Takoka?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Shink?
Aye.
Trustee Lundine?
Aye.
President Cook?
Aye. Motion carries. Next item is approval and passage of Ordinance 2025-117, an ordinance awarding a contract to FGM Architects to provide professional services for the police station additions and renovations project for an amount not to exceed $1,720,500. Director Venata?
I'll start, Mayor, but Director Venata and our Finance Director Lyons will be following up. We'll all have a brief presentation for you tonight. I thought it'd be helpful to just remind the board and provide some perspective to those that maybe are hearing this for the first time, a bit of a timeline of the project to date. In April 2024, the board authorized, in agreement with FGM Architects, to conduct a space needs assessment of the police department, as well as design some conceptual ideas for those needs. In October, the first part of that presentation was provided to the committee of the whole. That's the October 1st meeting, for anyone that wants to look back. And then in May of 2025, the board visited, on a field trip, a modern police facility. And then the June 3rd cowl meeting was presented more detailed conceptual ideas of what the needs are for the community, as well as what the possibilities are. And, you know, we selected FGM at the time for a number of reasons, but I think it's fair to share, I've mentioned this to the board before, but to the public, a bit of a unique situation is that 30 years ago, I met the principal, Ray Lee, when he was a young architect and I was a young sergeant, and we worked together on a massive police building renovation at the time. And over the last three decades, I've watched his firm, it's changed hand, it's grown, but in the region, they are definitely the go-to professionals. I've seen the products that they've generated, the work they've done over those 30 years. And it's just kind of ironic that here we are with perhaps an opportunity to see his team engage with the village further. So some additional background information about the police campus, it's actually two buildings next door to each other at 740 and 754 Lakeview Parkway. The original police building, the 754 building, was built and constructed in 1992 as a police building. And the 740 building, an office building, was constructed in 1995 and purchased by the village in 2007. The total space for both those buildings provide about 39,000, just over 39,000 square feet. The space needs analysis conducted last year determined that the optimal square footage of space needed for this community in a police facility is about 62,000 square feet. So that's kind of the delta of what we're working with. This is an overhead shot of the current campus. There were substantial renovations done to the 754 building in 2015, which addressed some overcrowding and some dating, you know, some inadequate issues that were focused at the time. But frankly, there was never a holistic look done at the police campus and how the building is used as a police campus. And as a result, there's significant shortcomings that exist today that largely fall into two categories, the category of serving the public and public engagement, and then the category of police operations. And I'll go into that just a little more detail on this slide. You know, this essentially provides, and much more detail was presented at those two previous presentations, for anyone that wants to look back, on YouTube, on the village channel, and they can see this. But essentially, there's a complete lack of lobby and public engagement space off the lobby for public visitors. The workflow, when we do engage with the public, is hampered. There's segregated staff areas that make effective working conditions, kind of challenging, crowded workspaces, deficient training areas and spaces. Our property and evidence spaces are really at its capacity and underserve the needs of the community. And site security and vulnerabilities, we've talked about that at great length. I will share with the board that I was somewhat skeptical when we charged FGM with the idea of not, after the space needs assessment, is look at our campus and see what they could come up with. And I was somewhat skeptical that our current campus would provide many options. But after our team worked with them pretty thoroughly, they've come up with a concept that is pretty impressive. And it's essentially taking the two buildings that the village owns, connects those buildings, it's enabling us to address all the identified shortcomings in that report, improves the public access, supports visitors when they are at the police campus, improves police operations, secures the campus, and essentially provides an option of meeting the optimal space needs for the community in the police building for today and the foreseeable future at a significantly less expense than if we were to build new. The conceptual plans estimated the building project to do everything that the community needs and serve the village for the next 30 or 40 years at a cost, a significant cost. $32.5 million is a lot of money, no doubt about it. But to build new without the cost of land at a different site, providing the same functionality, the estimate is it would cost over $56 million. So it's really a, I think, a testament to the foresight and the thinking that the village had when the opportunity came to buy that second building. And importantly, the care and maintenance that has been placed on both buildings over the years that enables us to be at this opportunity. So we've got a little more information. I'll turn it over to Chris.
So the proposal being considered today with FGM involves four major aspects of the design. So this will take us everything from the design up until construction. So the first phase of work would be schematic design. This is making sure all those boxes that were identified during the space needs study are in the right spot. Everything is the way the village wants it to be as far as layout. Then the next phase, where they really get into the meat and potatoes, the design development, they get into the utilities and all the details. Once that's all ironed out, they'll actually put together the construction documents, so the plans and the specs, so contractors and subcontractors can actually bid on it. And the last service that they're going to provide in this scope would be bidding and negotiations. So they'll help answer questions that the bidders may have and help the village through that bidding period. Now, there's another scope of work that is always necessary for a project like this, to have an architect onboard throughout the actual construction process, to respond to submittals, answer requests for information, help with the punch list and closeout of the project. That's not necessary to award at this time, so what is in the current proposal just brings us up through construction, but we want the board to be aware that there would be another supplement that we would award to FGM later when we get towards the construction phase of the project. I also have the rough schedule laid out in front of you here. If we award today, they would begin work in November, and the phases would take us all the way through next summer and fall, beginning of the fall of 2026, before we get to actual construction. Now, one thing I wanted to briefly touch on, that we will be coming back to the board a little bit later in the year to discuss in more detail, is the project delivery method. So for a construction, for all construction projects, there's four main types of ways that you build them. The first one listed here, the design-bid-build, this is the most standard that you all probably know really well. 90% of our CIP projects are done this way. You hire an architect or an engineer, they design a project, then you bid it, contract, the low-bid contractor then builds it. This is for very straightforward projects, simple projects, easier to construct. The next one is a design-build. This is where you work with a designer and builder together. They're one entity, and they design and build the project at the same time. This is either a fast-paced project where you want to start building while the design's still ongoing, or again, you see these a lot in like remodels or smaller projects. Neither of those first two are quite applicable to a major project that we're considering like this one. So the next two are more applicable to the way municipalities move forward with major construction projects. Number three on this list is a construction manager at risk. So under this model, you would, we would interview and hire a construction manager. These are groups that specialize in building big projects just like this. They would have a management team, they would help, they would actually come on early in the process to help through the design, to identify efficiencies, be the check kind of with on the architect to make sure everything's constructible. And then the at-risk part is there gets to a period where you still set a maximum price that they will build the project and bring it in at that price. The last one is a pre-qualified general contractor. This is very similar to a design-bid-build. However, rather than just putting it out on the street and letting any contractor bid on it, you would first interview different contractors, shortlist them, and only solicit bids from a select few contractors. In this model, most entities like municipalities like us would also hire an owner's representative. Since we are not experts in building $32 million buildings, we would hire a firm that kind of consults and helps the village on the side to manage and work through this flow. Right now, the direction that we're leaning is the construction manager, but this will be something, as I talk through next steps, you'll see where we would bring this in in the next phase.
I got a question.
Sure.
Can you go back to the first slide? So construction administration not included, so that's usually?
The architectural firm?
Yes. So construction administration, there's a lot of extra terms you'll throw on after construction.
I understand.
But this would be, their scope would include submittals, so the contractor says we're putting?
Okay. I understand that.
Okay.
So my question is, you can't pre, so what's the formula? Are you the FGM? So is there like a formula that's utilized for a project like this, like a percentage of the build or maybe?
Yeah. You can come for it.
I'm just curious if something like that can't be, I don't know, somewhat predetermined?
The construction administration is typically based on scope of services. So like often, if you're working with a construction manager, for example, I don't need to be on-site as often as I would if you had a peer general contractor, because they need a little more oversight. So in that case, we might be on the site every other week, you know, to see what's going on and review progress. We'd also like to review the submittals, answer all the RFI's, you know, do basically quality control reviews, and then, you know, all the way through the project. So if you go with a general contractor, you know, maybe your fees go up because they need a little more oversight. If you go to a construction manager, maybe it goes down a little bit, you know? So it's all based on? So it's all based on hours for our calculations. That's how we adjust it. It's not based on a percentage straight, straight percentage. So...
I mean, I guess my thought is whatever architectural firm you run with is pretty much going to be that person. So you couldn't bring in a third, an outside person that wasn't familiar with the project.
Right. You would continue with the same architect. And I would say that we, we looked at FGM's proposal as a percentage to the total construction project. It aligned what we were seeing with all the other, several other projects we looked at in the area.
And you're going to see on this slide, Chris is going to break down the cost, but I found it interesting, another way of doing some due diligence, we all know that Libertyville's in a similar situation as we are. They're doing a reconstruction project. They decided to do an RFQ to select a architect. They selected FGM. I've got a copy of their agreement, and the percentage is in one-tenth of a percent of what the rate is that FGM provided us.
Oh, no. I mean, obviously, they have a...
So you can...
As I say, that's impressive, so, you know.
So you can see on this slide, this shows the overall funding expectation and the breakdown. So FGM's line, you can see the design services that we're considering today is the $1.7 million. As we get to the end of 2026 and we move into construction, the estimated cost for that construction administration would be around $573,000. So the total design for this project is estimated to be just under $2.3 million. And then the construction costs would be the $30.2 million, and this will add up to that $32.5 million.
Well, I'm sure you can refer, you've worked with a lot of contractors all around this corridor, so I'm sure they're...
So with that, I'll hand it over, I'm sorry. Tom will jump into some of the funding side of things.
Thank you. Okay, so I did put together a few scenarios, high level, just to see how we might be able to fund this project over the next couple of years. For simplicity's sake, I did use a funding need of 35 million just to keep, which is actually a little bit higher than the last slide shown here. So the first bullet, we could approach this project and fund it 100% with debt. This would generate about $2.5 million of annual debt service that we would have to fund, and over the life of these bonds, let's say 20 years, the village would pay about 17 million in interest. Some of the pros to this would be, would be able to keep our investment balances at work, spread the cost of resources over the useful life of this facility, with some of the downfalls being obviously high annual payments and interest costs. A new revenue source would be needed to fund this level of annual cost. And when I say new revenue source, it's not a new property tax, just want to be clear, it's not a property tax. How debt typically works within Illinois municipalities, when bonds are issued, the debt service payment is scheduled with the county. For a typical municipality, the annual debt service is then added to the property tax levy each year, so payments from the property taxpayers can be collected to service that debt. Now, as we all know, at Vernon Hills, the village does not levy a tax, property tax. So each year, the village abates this, would abate this debt service as we do with our current bonds, basically telling the county not to levy that. And the village uses general revenues, largest source being the sales tax, to pay for the debt service in lieu of the property tax each year. And then jumping to the next bullet here, on the other side of the funding spectrum, this would be basically pay-as-you-go. We'd use our cash investment balances over the next couple of years as this project goes on. Obvious pro there is no annual debt service. However, that does come with a big cost, depletes our current cash investment balances, eliminating the general fund reserve. And the general fund fund balance would also end up below the required minimum. So again, these aren't recommendations, but these two help establish the funding options, boundaries.
What kind of a ballpark number do you have on what we gain in interest on invested money that's in our reserve fund?
Well, when we talk about funding a project like this over two decades, it's going to be hard to tell you what those interest rates are going to become over those two decades. Right now, our portfolio, our operating portfolio has a five-year max on it, so we can't really invest in maturities beyond that at the moment. So right now, we're getting around 4% on the portfolio. However, as years continue, if rates continue to decline, that's going to go down as well. So it's hard to, it's hard to compare one-to-one versus a 20-year time period on our operational five-year time period of investments.
But as a general rule, they wind up being fairly close to each other in terms of expense percent versus income percent. In other words, what I'm saying is that kind of makes it a wash, you're better off keeping your money in the bank and...
Well, I guess, maybe I'll try to say it a different way. It's not apples-to-apples because the 20, once you lock in your bonds, those rates are locked. We're not working with variable rates here. We would know that, hey, our effective rate is just under 4% or whatever. Our five-year operating investment portfolio now may be generating more than that. However, in years seven, eight, nine, 10, 15, and so on, it may be below that. So it's hard to line that up exactly at this rate.
Thank you.
Yep.
What's our current cash reserve or general fund reserve balance?
We have a cash investment balance of just under 40 million in the general fund.
And what's our budget, annual budget?
For, oh, the expenses about 30, about 38, 39 million. Yeah, so we have over 100% right now coverage.
And what do we need for, I mean, because we need for, keep our bond ratings, we need to have a certain amount in the reserve, correct?
That's a part of the calculation. However, with any scenario that we look at here within these boundaries, we still believe the AAA is going to stand.
So what do we need to, what is the minimum general fund we need to have?
Sixty, I'm going to hit some of that on the next slide here, but 67% is our minimum. So right now, we're north of 100%, so we have more than a year's coverage of expenses in the general fund. But I will cover that here a little bit more on this next slide. So now that the first slide went over kind of the boundaries of what we're looking at, the sweet spot would be some kind of combination of debt and cash to fund the project over time here. And the baseline scenario that I used here is 10 million in cash and 25 million in debt to issue over the 20 years. So this would lower the annual debt service requirement down to 1.8 million. And over the time, over the term of the bonds, the village would pay just over 12 million in interest on that. Now, the anticipated general fund balance, as you mentioned, the expense coverage ratio after expending this 10 million over this project is still anticipated to be around 100%. So that's equivalent of one-year worth of general fund expenditures, which is still well above the minimum of 67% minimum balance. So pros here, by using both cash and debt over the period, this will help lower our annual debt service costs and overall interest costs. The AAA bond rating, like I said, is still anticipated to maintain. And to fund the annual debt service, we would have to, new revenue sources or funding cut to services would most likely be needed to pay that. So, I mean, if we back up here, this is one of the largest projects in village history. As we move forward with this project, there's going to be additional times here where we do ask for funding approval. And the scenarios I just presented, the goal here is just to give you an understanding of the funding needs for the full project over the duration. The main takeaway here is just acknowledging that debt will need to be issued at some level here with the potential of increasing revenue to fund the annual debt service, which is likely. So understanding that, the village is in a good place to afford this project. So with that, more information on refined funding options will come up during the budget process. As the current timeline was presented, action, further action from the board for funding decisions would be anticipated around next summer. Any questions on, comments on funding scenarios?
How do we look at the funding for, it's not so much a question, how do we look at the funding for this project with the next five-to-10-year projects that we may face, whether it's Public Works, whether it's CUNIO, whatever it might be? How are we incorporating that into this decision so we kind of open it up a little bit, open up our viewing of our financial obligations that we're going to have in the next five, 10 years?
Sure. I'll speak high level to it, and if Tom can provide some numbers to it, we'll go with that. At a high level, the village has performed very well financially the last several years. The board, as you remember, has taken some action to take advantage of that strong performance by pre-funding two of our main capital improvement funds. We have our VERF, our Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund, which right now stands at about three years of purchasing power. So what that means essentially is we can make three years of our necessary vehicle and equipment replaces and replacements in the village without any new dollars going into that fund. On the capital side, I believe it was last fiscal year, we made a one-time transfer into our capital fund, and that transfer bought us the same amount of time period, I want to say it was like three or four years' worth of purchasing power of our currently scheduled project. So the exposure is if we add other projects to our five-year CIP, that's obviously going to take away from that existing balance. But as we have the project scheduled right now, we have that three or four years of already existing purchasing power without any new dollars going into the capital fund. So really, I think the focus for the board in analyzing this financial decision should really be that annual debt service and our ability to fund that for the next 20 years because that's really going to be coming from operating, right? And the more you're sinking in a fixed operating debt service payment, in some years, that could be less you now have to put into capital. So you have to kind of look at it how those two correlate with each other. So we're locking in for a debt service payment fixed for 20 years, but obviously, we're going to make sure that we're in a position where we feel very comfortable that we can not only pay that, but that we also have some wiggle room because of, as we all know, we are in a volatile revenue structure, given that we're primarily funded with sales tax. So if we have a down year or two, we need to make sure that we have the ability to still pay that debt service because that's going to be an obligation no matter what's happening with the economy.
And I would just add that the scope of the projects that we do, we want to be in front of the board a few times a year. I know we cover the CIP five-year kind of look at those projects. Those typical projects, we can fund with our normal cycle. It's these one-off projects like the one we're talking about right now where we have to look at it with a little bit more rigor, I guess, to make sure it fits in the scope of what we need to do moving forward. So just keeping it fresh and bringing it forward to the board and keeping these projects in mind so we can talk through these is how we can manage those.
How much are we contributing to the reserve, general fund reserve, would you say, year over year?
You're talking just a surplus that, so after the year is completed, I don't have that offhand. However, it's been in the multiple million of dollars over the last few years, three or four years.
Multiple million defined by?
Could be $2 million to $4 or $5 million surpluses over the last three or four years. And I can get some more detailed numbers on it, but it's been a good position.
So to that point, one of the things that we're trying to look at, and again, this will be in more detail as part of a future conversation, but rather than just simply adding a new source of revenue, we always want to look at, is there an opportunity to absorb this within our current operation? We have a very conservative budget, but as we've found over the last several years, being conservative has meant our expenses are normally coming in under, and our revenues are coming in above, which is leading to these surpluses. So it's possible that at least potentially for a short period of time in the beginning, we might have the cash flow to absorb an annual debt service. And again, the benefit of our financial structure, not relying on a property tax, is that we have other taxes at our disposal. So, you know, the obvious one that we'll be talking about eventually is we have the ability to turn on our home real sales tax by another quarter percent. A quarter percent increase in our home real sales tax in today's dollars is a net of about $3 million. So again, more than enough to pay in this scenario on the screen here, the debt service with some cushion on top of that. Again, we're not recommending necessarily that at this time, but that's kind of a plan B that we have available to us, you know, as we go through this process.
That also gives us some additional options to consider as far as how much money we want to put up front. Put more money up front now, replace with a revenue stream to pay that back, it might help that annual debt service burden be lowered. So just other things that we're looking at.
So we're not asking for the board to decide on the exact payment scenario tonight. What we want to do is provide you with the information to let you know that we feel at this point in time that we have enough comfortable options for us to proceed with this expense, if that's the desire of the board.
I have a question. Is there data that shows the percentage of, like our sales tax or even food and beverage that is from 60, 61 versus 48 versus others? See what I'm saying?
I do see what you're saying. I don't have any of that readily available, but I could definitely look into it. I don't know if you can break it down by a zip code, maybe?
Right. I'm sure there's a way to parse that to get like what percentage of your sales tax is from outside of the residence versus...
We have looked at large retailers in the past to see their foot traffic. There's foot traffic data that when we did the grocery tax presentation, I think several of our large grocers were under 20% Vernon Hills residents' foot traffic, just to give you an idea.
We could always buy the data.
And some of our...
Retailers got it, they'll sell it to you. I know Walmart sells their data, and they make a lot of money. I know someone who works for Walmart in data.
And there are services that compile all that stuff.
Well, several of the previous reports from Melanopy also addressed some of that kind of...
Right. The foot traffic of how many Vernon Hills residents are actually generating the sales tax versus outside communities.
Yeah.
Yep.
So I can quickly touch on the next steps here. This is the last slide we have for you tonight. So what's in front of you today is two items. One is this design contract approval that we've been discussing. The next item in the agenda under new business is a CIP budget amendment. Based on the spend schedule that FGM submitted to us, so that $1.7 million, we're expecting around $700,000 to get spent in the current fiscal year. So that would be a $550,000 addition to what we currently have in the budget. So the next item on the agenda would be approving an increase to our CIP budget, a budget amendment. So these are the two items that are in front of you today. But the next timeline, and with a special emphasis on when we'll be coming back to the board. So the next thing that we would do is look to solicit proposals for construction managers. We would get on that sooner than later, since like we said, they help us throughout the design process. We'd be hoping to come back to the board to discuss that whole project delivery method and recommend a construction manager as soon as this coming January, January 26. And then next spring and summer, we would be coming back to the board, both the committee of the whole, the zoning board, and the village board, similar to our other developments in town for our building appearance reviews, any zoning amendments. So there'll be several other touchpoints throughout that design project. And then the last step, we're expecting sometime in the summer or fall of next year, would we be coming back to the board for approval on the full construction budget going into construction? So with that, we're happy to answer any questions on the timeline, funding, scope, anything the board may have.
Questions from the board? So we're looking, you've actually already kind of addressed the next item as well, correct? So if there are no other questions, then the first thing we're going to do is 117, correct? Is there a motion to approve, for approval and passage of ordinance 2025-117?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. If there are no other questions, a roll call, please.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Lundin.
Aye.
President Cook.
Aye. Motion carries. Did we need any more discussion on the next one, or you actually already included it, correct?
It's looped in with the information, so if there's no comments or questions further, it's ready to be approved.
Then is there a motion to approve, for approval and passage of ordinance 2025-118, amending the annual budget?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Lundin.
Aye.
President Cook.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Next. Next item is approval and passage of ordinance 2025-116, an ordinance authorizing approval of a professional service agreement with Entertainment Management Group for 2026 for the Vernon Hills Days in an amount not to exceed $142,000. Manager Timoney.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, this is quite the pivot from acquiring a mansion, building a new police facility to Radio Gaga, so. The Vernon Hills Days Committee has been busy planning, believe it or not, next year's event already in 2026. And typically, our first step in that process is to book the entertainment lineup. I want to thank trustees Forster and Oppenheim for their help. They joined our committee back in September as we worked with EMG on seeing what vans were available for 2026. And I'm happy to report that we've arrived at a lineup, and the ordinance tonight is approving the contract with EMG, who we've used several years now, very happy with the service that they provide. Again, it's a full-scope service, so they're doing everything from booking the bands to coordinating the stage and the production, taking care of the acts on the nights of their performances, et cetera. So, and we're actually saving $8,000 this year. So last year's contract was for a clean $150,000, we're down now to $142,000. So I'll do a quick review of the lineup that's proposed. For our Thursday night entertainment, it is a hybrid Queen and Lady Gaga tribute band, Radio Gaga. For Friday night, we have opening act, a classic rock cover band, Aura, followed by Jason Chef, longtime lead singer of Chicago. For Saturday evening, we have Hello Weekend, followed by the James Barker Band, which played at Vernon Hills Days, I believe, in 2023, and was unfortunately rained out on a Friday night, so played for an audience of about five people when they returned to the stage. And then we'll end on Sunday with John's favorite band, The Boy Band Night. So. So if there's any comments or questions, we'd be happy to entertain, but we'd be looking for a motion to contract with EMG for the 2026 Vernon Hills Days.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Okay, and hearing none, is there a question?
She's excited to go.
I have no question, I'm just excited about one of the bands.
Which one?
Aura.
I thought it was The Boys.
Yeah, when I was, I was involved in the event.
Committee?
Committee, so to speak. And we met that band at this event committee, so to speak. And so they've been really good for us, and they were, they're bringing a lot of people.
Any other comments or questions?
It's a good opening act for that night, Chicago.
Okay, then hearing no comments or questions, roll call, please.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Lundin?
Aye.
President Cook?
Aye. Motion carries. Nothing else under new business, correct?
No, sir.
Does anyone have any communications or anything you wish to share with the board? Okay, I had a couple of things. I want to remind people that Saturday, October 11th, is the Hoptoberfest, the fundraiser for the District 73 Foundation, which will be occurring at Melody Farms. Time on that, I forgot to write down, I thought it was, that's one to four, right? Yeah, I think it's one to four. And a week later, the Harvest Fest at Hawthorne Row involving Yardhouse and that, that's from two to five, so two fall festivals coming up. The other thing I wanted to mention was the niche review of schools throughout the country came out again, and District 128, Vernon Hills, Libertyville High Schools, the two school districts, was ranked fourth in the state of Illinois and sixth in the country. So, at least according to the article I was reading, and very, very high ranking for them. And the individual schools, I think Vernon Hills was 10th or 11th. So congratulations to the district. And again, it's another example of why this is such a great community. And then we have a coat drive coming up. Assistant manager, would you care to talk about that?
Absolutely, Mayor. Thank you for bringing that up. So as the board will recall, we had a former village trustee named Jim Tyer, who served in the United States Navy during World War II. And when he came home, he continued his dedication and service to veterans, and especially those that need. And I want to say probably in the mid-'90s, he started something called the Winter Coat Drive, and it was part of Operation Stand Down in collaboration with the Lake County Veterans Assistance Commission, and the intent was to raise funds or collect coats for homeless and at-risk veterans. So this legacy lives on today with different partners, but the same persons that we are looking to address, and those are veterans and families in need, especially as we head into winter. So for 2025, the GLNV Chamber of Commerce is taking the lead on coordinating this event. It is a seasonal collection event, it'll be starting next week. It's supported by our local first responders, the Vernon Hills Police Department, public sector partners such as Countryside Fire Protection District, veterans. There's an opportunity to contribute to veterans by bringing gently-used or new coats to places such as the Village Hall, Vernon Hills Police Department, or the Vernon Hills Municipal Golf Course. You'll see a red box there. These items are collected, and usually in November, December, they're placed at a drop-in center in North Chicago. So thanks for bringing this up. We appreciate the participating businesses that support this, but obviously, our local first responders actually do the bulk of the heavy collecting.
Yeah, it's a good event, and it's definitely needed.
Yep, thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else with any communications? Okay, then is there a motion to adjourn and go to committee of the whole?
Motion to adjourn and go to committee of the whole.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Anybody wish to have a two-minute break before we start committee? Is everybody good?
Let's go.
Okay. I mean, it's not like the 400-page agenda we had.
No, like last.
Last.
That was just wrong.
Okay, well, then, in that case, I would like to call to order the committee of the whole meeting. Roll call, please.
Trustee Forster?
Here.
Trustee Takaoka?
Here.
Trustee Schenk?
Here.
Trustee Lundin?
Here.
Trustee Markwart?
Here.
President Cook?
Here.
And trustee Oppenheim gave prior notice that he would not be in attendance.
Okay, and no citizens signed up wishing to address the committee. Everybody else is here for something on it. Then the first item then would be approval of the committee of the whole meeting minutes of September 16th, 2025. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion is second. Any comments, questions, corrections, additions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Lundin?
Aye.
President Cook?
Aye. Motion carries. Our next item tonight is concept discussion, Connor Commercial Real Estate, multifamily residential development, 13 to 73 South Milwaukee Avenue. Director Jengs, yeah?
Anyone have a statement?
Thank you. The Connor and McShane Commercial Real Estate team is proposing a multifamily residential development. As the committee will probably recall, this was here about a year and, not quite a year and a half ago, for the initial concept review. The original concept was for a 288-unit wrap-style building, similar to the Domain, with 19 townhomes along the south property line. The development remains pretty similar to that at this time, after the team's been working on it for this year. It's up to a projected 290-unit apartment building with now 18 townhome units. They've been refining the design itself. The primary reason for requesting this update tonight is the main concern during the initial concept review was access to the site. There was a question as to whether the north access would be permitted to be full access, and whether IDOT would approve that. At that initial discussion, the committee had strongly encouraged the developers to acquire either an easement or property going south to connect to the American Hotel Signal. That would be the surest form of having full access, signalized access. So over the course of the last year, so the development team has been working on both of those things. The north access has become a more sure thing, IDOT has committed that full access will be permitted. The south drive that they're showing on their conceptual plan still has a bit of a question mark as to whether that would be three-quarter access, so if the left turns out would be restricted, whether it would be right-in, right-out. So still a question on the table with IDOT on that. The main issue that they've run into is that the property in between their property and the Signal, the owner of that property is now deceased and has no will and no heir. The property remains difficult to acquire, but since they've been able to get confirmation from IDOT that the north, the north drive will be permitted to be full access, they'd like to continue to technical review. But since this is slightly different in that they weren't able to obtain access to the Signal, before technical review, I did ask them to come back, meet with the committee, and ensure that the north access being confirmed as full access would be acceptable. They do intend to continue to pursue that, the south connection to the Signal. There's just no end in sight necessarily for that connection. So there is some analysis of the traffic that they had provided to IDOT that is in your concept memo, including the projected wait times in and out. I believe that's as a one-stage turn, not a two-stage turn. So comparing it to some of the other access points in Milwaukee. So with that, I would like the development team to come forward and reintroduce the project.
Good evening, everyone. Andrew, still a lot of my thunder here, so I'll resuscitate quickly. We can move on to questions and answers in fairly short order. But again, my name is Michael Bossone. I'm Senior Development Director for Connor Commercial Real Estate. This is property that Connor and its affiliates have owned for north of 25 years, so we're excited to try and, you know, actually make it something useful. So this is the McShane family and companies. Once again, Connor Commercial Real Estate's development wing of the McShane companies. You might be also familiar with McShane Construction, a large general contractor based in Rosemont with offices in Arizona, Tennessee, Alabama, and California. And then Kansas McShane is our Texas affiliate. These are some sort of just aggregate statistics, speaking to the company's scale and track record and history. And the company remains owned by the McShane family, which is originally based on the North Shore here, and now the second generation are, you know, in the North Shore and ones in the city, but they're all, you know, here in the Chicagoland area. Just noteworthy, McShane experience, the senior living facility of Brookdale, or at least formerly Brookdale, was built by McShane Construction. Woodview Apartments in Deerfield is a Connor development also built by McShane Construction. And actually, I come here today from groundbreaking on our Downers Grove apartment complex, which we just had our ceremony for this morning. It's that image on the right, just seems particularly topical today, of old days. This is our site location, broadly speaking. As you can see, everyone, I'm sure, knows exactly where that is. This is the site in specific, directly across from the former American Hotel Register Building, just south of Brookdale, separated by a small slice of forest preserve there. And you can see the Signal intersection to the south at the bottom of this image that Andrew's referencing that we were trying to get access to and were unable to. So this is our updated site plan. If anyone recalls the prior version, without seeing them side by side, I'd be surprised if you could pick out the differences. In short, there's one fewer townhome along the south edge there. We shortened the parking garage slightly because we're going up one more level, mostly for constructability reasons, and we've reconfigured the garden level facing the river slightly. But it's, you know, for all intents and purposes, basically the same footprint, and just shifted some elements around to make the engineering and the architecture work a little bit better. We have developed a slightly more, I shouldn't say more, we have developed an aesthetic for the project. We came here last time with some concept images, saying this is our design inspiration. We've actually come up with what we sort of want the look and feel of this building to be. This image is probably most helpful, more in terms of massing. You can see most of the building's mass is pushed back away from Milwaukee Avenue towards the river. This is actually a pretty soft approach from the street. Just some sort of street-level, you know, pedestrian-level images to see sort of what it might look and feel like. These are all, as you can see by the, you know, the character of the rendering, fairly preliminary, but we were trying to go for, you know, what sorts of colors, what's dark, what's light, what are accent tones, what might the materials be? And we think we landed in a good spot for some, you know, variety and dynamism with the look. And these are some sort of, this is the clubhouse area here with the townhomes, you know, across from the pool in the lower image, and these are just some sort of runs of the longer facade and showing how we wanted to break that up and keep it from looking sort of monolithic and heavy and big. So addressing the site plan and the access in specific, I will slightly re-characterize what Andrew said. IDOT does not approve anything upon initial submission, they just simply raise their concerns, and they have not raised any concerns about our north access, so I don't want to characterize that we have received approval from IDOT, because they don't do that at this stage yet. We've received as positive indication as we can get at this stage of the process that the north access will be approved. The south access, we resubmitted this plan, which shows the three-way access. We received comments back from IDOT, the first time through that conflicted, frankly, internally with each other. One said, build it as a right-in, right-out, the other one said, don't build it. So we went back and we said, can you guys try again and get on the same page? We would very much like to have that south access. I did speak with the fire marshal, he doesn't feel it's necessary, though he also would like to have it. So we're going to keep pushing on that, but I can't speak for what IDOT will or won't do on that south access, because we frankly got just diametrically opposed opinions from two different groups at IDOT on the same piece of paper. It's amazing that they printed that and sent it out that way.
So you have ingress egress to the south. You have ingress from both directions, but egress only going north, right? And you want south egress? Or you want to?
I don't think I understand the question.
So what is it that you're trying to get from IDOT?
So we, more than anything, I want clarity on the south entrance, and I would be happy if they gave me a right-in and a right-out. We're still showing it as a left-in. That was not one of the options that the two different groups at IDOT gave to us. We didn't redraw it, so it's totally possible they will come back and say?
So right now, what you're showing here is not what's been approved? You only have a right-in and a right-out right now? Is that?
Nothing has been approved. In any case, on the south entrance, the comments we got back from one group was right-in, right-out, and the other group was no access.
So tell me again, what is it that your desire is?
For the south?
Yes.
I would like right-in, right-out, and left-in. I don't want to indicate that that's a particularly likely outcome. I think the most likely outcome is right-in, right-out.
And then full access to the north, but is that, again, also up for debate?
No, full access to the north, they raised no concern whatsoever. That we're highly confident in.
And you were trying to tie into the?
Yeah, so.
The light, right?
So the committee had suggested, and we made our, I promise you, our very best effort to get to the light, which is on the parcel just south of the last one here on the screen. So there is the parcel that the light dies into, and then there's the parcel that's on screen separating us from the parcel with the traffic light. And it's that intervening parcel that you see here on the screen, where the title owner died in 2021. There was a mortgage that went to foreclosure. We showed up three months in a row to try and bid on it at the foreclosure auction, which got postponed, postponed, postponed. And then somehow someone discharged the mortgage outside of the auction process, so the mortgage went away. And I don't, I can't find the error. I've hired private investigators, hired skip tracers, like, I have no idea where the sun?
This is the property just to the south?
This is the property to the south of us.
So are you taking away there, like, this was our discussion when they came a while ago for the?
Yeah, I mean, is there somebody paying the property tax on that?
There's not.
Well, then, maybe we could, maybe you could buy it for?
So the last set of property taxes had been purchased previously. Those were redeemed by the same person who paid off the mortgage last September. So they're delinquent now on one cycle of property taxes, but those have not come back up for sale.
Hmm. Because it sure would be nice to connect to that light.
I? I completely agree. I would love to have that parcel. We tried very hard to get it. At this point, we basically actually put our design on hold for probably about six months because we knew that there was a foreclosure sale coming. And we said that we'll show up and we will, you know, within reason, we'll pay whatever it takes to get that when that process was forced stalled somehow, or I should say canceled.
So that, it says here, Honey House Lane is the road that accesses those, the homes that you say are...
It's really a driveway.
So it's a driveway. So your plan is overlapping that driveway.
That's just, that would just be poor sort of us layering on top of it. That is not on our property.
You'll build, they'll still have that full driveway access. Their plot is, okay.
Well, they being who...
Well, who, the property itself...
Yes.
Has access.
Yes.
Director James, do you have your light on? Did you want to say something?
No.
No, I was just checking.
No, I hit it and couldn't figure out how to turn it off.
Oh, okay. That's okay. Got it. No, I just want to make sure.
That's on record, Andrew.
So I don't have any more slides unless we want to get deep into the weeds of traffic study and counts and wait times. But I'm happy to answer any questions.
Andrew, what do you think?
So my concern was the traffic analysis, just ensuring that the full access wouldn't cause an issue, that residents wouldn't be delayed too much, or that the delay turning in wouldn't be so much that people would start making hazardous decisions and just shooting across the northbound traffic. So Kim Lee Horn put together analysis of the wait time, which I think shows a pretty typical wait time for an unsignalized access like this, and is actually less than some of the signalized intersections where obviously you're waiting for the light to turn green, but I had no concern with it. So I think as long as the committee is okay moving ahead to technical review, it sounds like they would also like the signal if they can, but this does seem like a viable plan at this point that won't cause an issue.
So the only thing you're looking for is consensus to go to technical review?
You had given sort of the encouragement to move to technical review, resolving the access. The way that they have resolved that access, I just wanted to confirm, was acceptable to the committee.
Yeah, the renderings of the product are very nice.
I'm glad you think so. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so...
Consent?
Trustee Schenck?
Yeah, sure.
Trustee Takoka?
Yeah.
Trustee Markwood?
Yes.
Trustee Forster?
Yeah.
Trustee Lund Dean?
Yes.
Okay. So let's go ahead and go and keep your eye on that property and...
Certainly will. Yeah, yeah.
It'd be interesting to see what I dot says to you about the left in there because it's a, it makes for a kind of a weird pork chop when you've got three out of the four.
It does. So we'll be sure to keep Director Jennings in touch and apprised of whatever I dot comes back with.
And counsel?
A quick reminder to the petitioner, tonight is not a formal approval. It was an opportunity to gain feedback from the board. You will move to technical review to finalize your plans and come back before the Planning and Zoning Commission and this board for formal consideration.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, next item is concept discussion, Rocky Patel Premium Cigars, 555 Town Line Road. Director Jennings?
Thank you. The property ownership of 555 Town Line, specifically the westernmost parcel, GW Properties, is working with a potential tenant, Rocky Patel Premium Cigars, to open a standalone cigar store and lounge in the location shown on the screen. As a standalone building, I've done some preliminary analysis on this. I don't have any major concern that there'd be an issue with parking. The primary reason for the concept review in this case is that the use itself, the cigar lounge, there's no use defined in our zoning code that's comparable enough. So in order for this to proceed on through technical review and on to zoning entitlement, I wanted the committee as a whole to understand that paired with this would be some type of zoning code text amendment. My thought at this point is the zoning code text amendment would most likely be a village action. I've got some other related zoning code amendments, tobacco and vape type uses that I'd like to propose at the same time. So I think it would be more appropriate to pull that part out, make that a village action, and have that run parallel to the petitioners, what I believe will be a special use with site plan and landscape and appearance approval. So there are a handful of Rocky Patel locations in the area, five, I believe, and then two of which have this similar type of lounge that's proposed. With that, Representative of GW Properties is here to go over the concept and answer any questions you might have.
I love the concept. Are you going to go for a license? First of all, thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. I would say Mitch Golz, Mitch Golz, GTZ Properties. I'm just smirking because I've been in front of this board many of the same people many times for all very different things, and I would like to think that everything we brought forward has been successful thus far. And I've covered the whole gamut of options. I think I found all the uses that kind of fit with code but need some sort of approval. So we, as you may recall, we own the former Toys R Us. We redeveloped it into the current Ace Pickleball. We completed a lot of improvements to the property and parking lots and signage that was part of the last approvals. Our initial plan, and I was contemplating trying to activate this large parking lot, particularly the finger portion of it that we're proposing here. We've been marketing that site for two-plus years and trying to get food users and retail users, and it is a secondary position than the market. So some of the users, like the Raisin Canes, things like that, we're not, is inclined. But we developed the Rocky Patels in Hanover Park. It was wildly successful. We did that as part of a master development with Starbucks and then some other land that had been, you know, some sort of gun range.
The closest would be the Hanover Park, or isn't there another one?
So to hear the closest one would be Norwich. The operator would have liked to have been here. He had a death in the family and had to fly overseas, but they've, we filled in a lot of information as part of the application. This is, you know, this is not a hookah lounge. This is not a vape shop. I mean, it is a very high-end cigar store, you know, similar to what you could find at Benny's, but in a much larger selection. And there is a lounge aspect to it, which is the part that I think Andrew was pointing out is not, doesn't necessarily fall in the code. But there's, these pictures are real-life examples of them. I think the most similar would be the one in Hanover Park that we did, but first-class operation. They appeal to a wide range of clientele. They, you know, they are open 24 hours in some cases because they do get a lot of people that are, you know, municipal workers, you know, firemen, police officers that work odd hours. And they do get people here that want to come here and work and use it more of a coffee shop type situation. So we did provide a lot of photos. They will comply with all the codes within Vernon Hills as well as Illinois. There's something called, I think, the open, there's a lot of requirements to operate a facility like this in any part of Illinois. Most notable is being a freestanding building. You can't occupy something like this in a multi-tenant building, which is why it's very hard to find an opportunity like this in Vernon Hills because most of the retail spaces, as you're aware, are part of larger shopping centers. So we would be working with them to either sell down the land or build them a freestanding building on this parcel within the Town Line Common Shopping Center and then seek the necessary approvals within the development itself. But it's a beautiful facility. I'd encourage anyone that is aficionado to check out the one in Hanover Park or Norwich. But we think it'd be a nice addition. These are not things that just pop up. These are major investments. They do millions of dollars in sales. I am a fan. I'm a customer when I can be, but this, I think, would bring people from a long distance. There's nothing like this in Vernon Hills and nothing like this nearby. I mean, it's a hard, it's a very hard thing to find a zoning for because of all the restrictions within the Illinois code. So we think this would be a great fit. Happy to answer any questions, and there's more photos and narrative in the application.
They have lockers?
They do have lockers. They do all have, so they don't, I believe, in Illinois, I don't think you can get a liquor license, or they're choosing not to. They do what's called the lockers, where you're saying, like, you can, I think you're allowed, I think, four bottles. Like, you can buy or rent a locker.
You have, you can have your own.
Yeah, you can bring your own, like, and like, they can't sell it to you somewhere in a restaurant, BYOB, but you can have, like, lockers where you can store your couple bottles of scotch and come there with your friends. So we think it's a, you know, a nice fit for people that like to do those types of things.
Yeah. It's like they have in the...
Yeah. So there's other photos and...
No offense, but I like the Leva Melania's.
I'm not offended at any of this. I mean, the owner of the company who, the owner of the company who has family lives in Vernon Hills, who would like to be there as well, but they had to travel overseas, they are familiar with Rocky Patel, the brand. So they're, but they sell, they sell everything, and I mean, they're, I think they have one of the biggest humanors in the state. So their building that they did in Hanover Park was about the same size, 6,000 square feet. So, yeah.
What are your hours of operation?
They have typically been open 24 hours in some of these places because they get a lot of people that come here off-hours. You get, you know, you miss people that work off-hours or they want to come by. And it's not just people that come for cigars. I mean, they do operate it more like a cafe, so if you want to just come and work for a few hours. It's not like the stodgy cigar lounge you might find in old shopping centers where there's three chairs and the same people are sitting there every day. And eventually, they just don't show up. So this is definitely more welcoming environment, pool tables and TVs, you know, more of like a venue. You can go with some friends. So, yeah, there we go.
Okay, cool. Other comments or questions from the board? So what are you looking for tonight from just...
Just the consensus of the committee to move forward with this idea of a parallel track. They would be working on the technical review, and then the village staff and village attorney would be working on a zoning code amendment to run parallel with it so that both things would come back at the same time.
Okay. Trustee Schenck?
Yeah, this is great.
Trustee Takoka?
You know how I feel.
Yeah. Yeah, I've played golf with you, so, I've played golf with you, so I know, yeah.
He was talking about it on the way in.
I saw it on the agenda. I go, I'm not listening to this people.
No, I was...
Trustee Forrest?
Hi.
Trustee Lund Dean?
I have no problem with the retail part. I'm not crazy about the smoking inside the building.
Well, that's why the state requires that it be a freestanding building.
Standing.
I know.
Yeah.
That's just me.
Yeah. Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, yeah. So, yeah, and counsel?
And just like our last petitioner, tonight is not a formal approval. It's not an approval at all. It's a direction to move to technical review. You will finalize your plans and then move to formal consideration before planning and zoning, and then again this board.
I'm aware, I think, and I will point out that the plan that we did provide, and we are not, to my knowledge, seeking any variances. We have more than a parking setback, so it's, but we will look forward to that opportunity. I want to thank Andrew and his staff. They've been incredibly great in every step of the way. So thank you, guys, and we'll be back with you soon.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is discussion of the 2025 Holiday Lighting Event. Andrew Timmey?
I'll kick us off, sir, and then turn it over to Assistant Village Manager Petrello. Just wanted to remind the board, at our last board meeting, we approved the Phase Two plans for the Hawthorne Mall redevelopment. And a component of that project included a new outdoor expanded public plaza where they have ideas for programming, especially for some winter activities. So we're going to be talking about options for this upcoming holiday lighting event, but wanted to just float out to the board the concept of, my understanding is, the ultimate vision was to one day kind of arrive at having this in conjunction with Hawthorne Mall and using that outdoor space that we're helping to incentivize through our TIF district. So what we're really talking about is probably three or four years of having a location and a time where we do this with maybe the long-term plan of utilizing that space with Hawthorne Mall. So just wanted to start that with the context of the conversation and turn things over to Assistant Village Manager Petrello.
Thank you, Kevin. So one of the many village-sponsored events includes the traditional holiday lighting event, and for many years, this event was conducted at the Muni. However, with the creation of the Back Nine Practice Green, a new venue had to be identified and utilized for 2024. Tonight's presentation will include a brief recap of last year's event and two options for 2025, along with a brief conversation on date options. First, a recap of last year and option one. For 2024, in partnership with the Park District, Century Park was utilized. The Century Park site offered a more centralized location in the village, and one objective was to have this event closer to the commercial areas, as Kevin mentioned, with the hope of making this event more accessible and at minimum, more visible to the community and those who visit Vernon Hills throughout the holiday season. A benefit to this location here included the Park District amenities of adjacent parking lots and restrooms. With our live tree not surviving the season, we have the opportunity to revisit how we approach this event and site options. As a reminder, at the September 2nd board meeting, the purchase of an artificial tree was approved, and this will allow village staff flexibility in identifying potential locations. The Park District has again offered Century Park as a site option, and we are grateful for the Park District's continued support and partnership. Our new artificial tree could be placed at this site with the menorah, kanara, and other traditional holiday displays. One challenge with this site is a lack of shelter should there be inclement weather. As board members may recall, a small tent was set up last year, but this tent does not provide heat, and the tent is limited in its protection from the winter elements and is limited in the number of people that can be accommodated who may desire to seek shelter. Option two, last year's staff presented the site option of the green space between, the green space adjacent to the Village Hall. This site, known as Lashin Park, is situated between Hawthorne Club and the Village Hall. Benefits of this site include, staff can secure the parking lot at the Village Hall to create a pedestrian-friendly site the night of the event. Vehicular traffic and access to the Village Hall could be limited on the date of the event to police and fire vehicles escorting Santa. Holiday displays could be placed along Evergreen Drive and Lashin Park, creating a beautiful display leading into Hawthorne Club. This site would be easily accessible to residents in Hawthorne Club, the original section, as well as those visiting the Village Hall during the holiday season. And there is sufficient parking at the Muni. A member of the police department could assist with crossing persons from the municipal parking lot to the Village Hall for this event. The Village Hall could also be opened to include the large conference center room to allow people to gather inside should the weather be cold and/or wet. And as we're aware, there are restrooms here at the Village Hall. Another topic of discussion includes the date of the event. Traditionally, this event has been conducted on the Saturday of Thanksgiving holiday weekend. And while attendance has been consistent over the last few years, we are curious if more persons would be available to attend if this event was closer to the winter holidays and not on an actual holiday when residents of Vernon Hills may be out of town. So for your consideration, two dates are proposed. The traditional Saturday of Thanksgiving weekend, which is Saturday, November 29th this year at 4:30 p.m., or the following weekend of Saturday, December 6th at 4:30 p.m. So staff is seeking board direction on your preferred location, and a desired date of this event should be conducted.
Comments or questions from the board?
I like them all.
I like here.
The, yeah, the advantage to Lashin Park here is the shelter. We could even include, you know, the Muni with potentially helping with people maybe going there for hot chocolate or something.
Right.
And we've also got a couple places like the new bakery across the street that could potentially be involved.
You know, it's going to be like 65 degrees now.
Yeah.
Well, it sure wasn't last year.
You're pretty much guaranteed great weather on the 29th.
It sure wasn't last year.
Well, that's my point, you know? It was really cold last year.
Well, they could still do hot chocolate in here, too.
And we still had, no, we still had a very good crowd last year, even though it was so cold.
The food truck was a good thing last year. We could have a few more of those.
Yeah.
Well, they had the churro truck, right?
Yes, so we had no matches, and they have offered to assist again. The price for the village was really good, and as you recall, that the goods were given free to those who attended, so we could do something like that again. Kevin had mentioned, as you said, Mayor, maybe bringing in the bakery to see if they also want to participate as well. And as you mentioned, after the event, you know, we could have the Muni being a final well. And as you mentioned, after the event, you know, we could have the Muni being a final place where people could attend.
And we don't have like a...
We can attend it to an after hours.
Sure.
And we don't have like a large heated tent at our disposal. That'd just be an additional cost if we were to stay at the, I like the, where the location is, is it's a very centralized location for the village, you know, as people drive through.
Do you think this tree would be more visible from Route 60 than the one we had last year in terms of?
No, no, it's going to be very similar, very similar.
How tall is the tree we're getting?
26 feet.
And how long, how tall was it?
Similar in size to the one we sprayed it in.
Okay.
In regards to dates, my gut is to stick with the original date that we've always had because there's some consistency to that.
The November, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with that.
And if it is going to be cooler, it's going to be December 6th versus 20th. Maybe not. Maybe it'll be 80.
Oh, no, it's, yeah, right. I agree on the date. I think it's a consistent message.
Yeah, the November 20th.
Because right now, we're bouncing around all over town. We're...
Right. Everyone knows it, so.
Yeah, everyone expects that, so.
Do we have a number on the number of... I don't even know how to say it now. How many people attended last year? The number of people?
So, Chief, you were there. So we always do like a crowd estimate. My guesstimate would be about 300, right around that number. So we know that there were about 150 cups of coffee and cocoa issued. And I think they had like an equal amount of pastries that went out. So just, you know, our guessing of, from the events we've run, we're guessing that 300 range.
And over here, when we did it over here, any idea?
I'm sorry, I was doing last year's, I thought...
Yeah.
He's saying, what was the...
Last year at the Muni was 300?
Compared to the Muni.
No.
Yeah, but, okay, so the previous years...
Last year was definitely a bigger crowd than any year at the Muni.
Correct.
Okay, so that's an interesting, to me, I think that's an interesting point because the whole point and one other point in moving it is making it more inclusive for the village, for more people to come and show up. So, what's that? There's a lot of room. You got north, you got south. That's, that was one of the things that I remember when we talked about moving it to that corner, is to give more access, more visibility for everybody in Vernon Hills, centrally located. So my opinion is probably, maybe try one more year there? Maybe try it one more year there? And now it's going to be 10 below.
Right. Because you said that.
I just guaranteed it.
Chief?
I was just going to agree, Mayor, with your comment. I agree. I think last year was a bigger crowd. I'm also reminded of dealing with special event organizers that go by a rule of three years. They say it takes three years for something to get traction in a new location or a new venue. So it strikes me that it's probably likely to build this year if it were to be there.
At 60.
Yeah, at Century Park. It's likely to build, and you'll, you'll really know at the three-year mark if that's the place. So again, that's, I've heard that from a couple different reliable special event sources.
But if there's, one of the concerns is wind or weather, how would we address that? I mean, is there any way to address it or to even figure out what to do?
The only thing we said last year was most everybody brings a portable warming shelter with them in terms of their car. And that's about the only real backup plan we can come up with, really.
You can do tents with heaters, but again, that's a big thing.
Yeah.
But no way the tree would fall or anything like that, is what I'm trying to...
No.
That's where I'm going with it.
Oh.
No, no.
Public works, guys, holding on.
Well, that's what I'm thinking.
Chris is going to be inside.
Chris, you're one of them.
So I should probably poll the board on location then?
We start with location and then, it sounds like the date.
Well, the date, I mean, the date pretty much, yeah. Yeah, that's, I think we have consensus on that. Location, trustee Sheng?
I'd like to keep going at 60, see how it rolls at the Century Park.
Trustee Takoka?
Ditto. I'm with, I, yeah.
With, with...
With Mike.
Oh, okay. Trustee Markwart?
Here.
At Lashen?
Yeah, Lashen.
Okay. Trustee Lundeen?
I like the Century Park.
Century Park. Trustee Forster?
Century Park. Give it another shot.
Okay.
It'll be 80.
Well, even if I were to agree with you, that would still be 42. So that gives you consensus on...
People swimming.
No, Chief, Chief raises a good point. You got, you do have to do something more than once to read.
Well, and they say that with business, too. It takes three years to get your business settled.
Okay. Anything else on, so we're going with Century Park, Saturday, November 29th at 4:30.
Yep. We'll start having our communications team put that out, and we'll start setting up a planning meeting with our partners, and we'll get it going. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
I'm heading up north. Do you want me to look for a real tree? A Yuper tree?
A Yuper tree, yeah.
Can we go back to that picture where he's standing next to the Charlie Brown tree?
That's a good picture. I like that picture.
I'm not sure what was going on there.
It's going to be, so I have to, I have to give the annual...
You're a good sport.
... contact sustainability report, and that's going to be able to cover all this.
The prom is...
It was buying it from a tree.
I think it was the earth that they put.
Yeah. Poor thing didn't survive.
Well, it had to be moved from the, the tree.
Okay. So that's it for committee of the whole, correct?
Yes, sir. We will have a closed session to discuss Illinois compiled statute, Section 2C 5 and Sections 2C 6.
Okay. Is there a motion then to adjourn committee of the whole to go into executive session for the items the manager just pointed out?
Motion, okay. Motion to move to second.
Okay, motion to second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Takoka?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Sheng?
Aye.
Trustee Lundeen?
Aye.
President Cook?
Aye. We are adjourned, and we will not be conducting any business when we come out of closed session. Thank you and good night.